Good morning, everyone. We're going to get started. The members will take their seats and any guests will retire behind the rail. We can move forward with our invocation. To give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Father Martini Shaw of the African Episcopal Church of St. Thomas. He is here today as the guest of Councilman Jones. I would ask all guests, members, and visitors to please rise.
Let us pray. O gracious and ever-living God, the God of Moses, Abraham, Isaac, Jacob, Rebecca, Sarah, and Jesus. We pause to express thanks for this day and for all the blessings of this day. We pray for our nation, our state, and especially for our city and its communities. The city of Philadelphia. The city that is the birthplace of this nation. The city that is the place of the signing of the Declaration of Independence. The city of Benjamin Franklin, William Penn, Absalom Jones, Richard Allen, Octavius V. Cattle. The city of many firsts of our nation. The first hospital. The first public library. The first post office. The first zoo. The first fire department. The first art museum. The first theater. The first stock exchange. The first American flag. The first university and medical school. The city of brotherly love and sisterly affection. We pray for our mayor and we pray for our city council. And we pray for those in authority who serve in positions of public trust, that they may serve justice and promote the dignity and freedom of every human being. Guide and direct their actions and their decisions. Bless our city, oh God, with your grace, with your mercy. Where there is division, give it unity. Where there is corruption, purify it. Where there is darkness, give it light. Where there is injury, give it forgiveness and pardon. Where there is hatred, give it love. Where there is doubt, give it faith. Where there is homelessness or hunger, give it shelter and food. Where there is scarcity, give it abundance. Where there is sadness and despair, give it hope and give it joy. And may our city continue to remain in the forefront and in the vanguard of being first in our nation, leading and advocating for peace and justice and equality for all people. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much for those inspiring words. We really appreciate it. Counsel, be at ease. The next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, October 18th, 2018, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, October 18th, 2018 be approved.
Thank you to the movement, probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those in favor say aye. Thank you. Those opposed, ayes have it. And the Journal is approved. Our next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, a leave of absence is requested for Councilman Squillen.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. And leave shall be granted. The next order of business... I'm sorry. Chair now recognizes Councilman O.
On behalf of the minority, there are no requests for leaves of absence.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. At this time, I would like to dispense with our regular order of business, and I would just like to thank everyone who has taken time out of their busy day to come down to witness their government in action. We genuinely hope that you appreciate being here today, that it is a knowledgeable day for you, but more importantly, a pleasurable day, so much so that you come back again. So again, thank you for being here today. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan, who presented a resolution recognizing October 25th as Cardiac Health Awareness Day. With Darren Sudden and those accompanying him, please join the Councilman at the podium. And joining Councilman Heenan, we have Councilman Tobinberger and Councilman Don and Councilwoman Bass. And also Councilman Greenlee.
So, good morning, everybody. If anybody from Mobile CPR Project is here and the Philadelphia Fire Foundation, please, could you join us in the presentation in recognizing today, October 25th, as cardiac health awareness? And I saw somebody from Local 22. If you could come on up here. I know you're dressed appropriately and green. But come on up here. So, it is my honor, and I apologize for some technical difficulties, but this is a day to recognize October 25th as Cardiac Health Awareness Day in the city of Philadelphia, and honoring Simon's Heart for promoting cardiac health awareness. A few of the organizations I had just mentioned, I'd just like to speak briefly on because they're a part of the context of raising awareness for today, and that's our Philadelphia Fire Department Foundation. President Sharice has been doing a fantastic job, and most people don't know how they engage in the institutions and how they partner with our Philadelphia EMS and our Fire Department in fire prevention with technology and equipment, you know, running campaigns in cardiac awareness. Of course, CPR, the Mobile CPR Project, is kind of self-explanatory, but they are able to reach out to communities and partner with organizations with 10 people or more to raise awareness of cardiac arrest and how to administer it in group settings, and they do that with trained paramedics and EMS personnel. So they do a fantastic job. And we'll hear at the end of today's presentation from Simon's Heart and the foundation, from Darren Sudden, who unfortunately championed this as a result of a SIDS situation with his own child, and he's turned that into such an incredible organization that's helping raise awareness of cardiac awareness, not just in Philadelphia, but throughout the city and the region. You know, I had experienced something in one of our local rec centers. We have these kids that are playing all these athletic games and may not be aware of certain signs and conditions, and it really does bring kind of the attention that's necessary, you know, by providing AEDs in our rec centers and in around public spaces where we all recreate and play, and especially when it comes to our children and our elderly. So, we do recognize today as Cardiac Health Awareness Day in the city of Philadelphia, again honoring Simon's Heart for promoting cardiac health awareness and...
Whereas cardiac arrest is an abrupt loss of heart function that can come on suddenly and may not display signs or symptoms before occurring, and whereas cardiac arrest can be fatal if proper steps such as cardiopulmonary resuscitation or CPR are not performed, and...
Whereas, due to the heart's function of pumping blood, stalling it is also important that a defibrillator or AED be used to shock the heart back into normal rhythm, and whereas the organization such as the Philadelphia Fire Foundation, Mobile CPR, and Simon's Heart work in Philadelphia communities is to educate members on how to detect and identify cardiac arrest and how to assist when someone experiences cardiac arrest, and...
Whereas, the Philadelphia Fire Foundation provides life safety programs in communities to help combat not only cardiac arrest, but also the use of EpiPens, basic first aid and triage, and overdose reversal. And whereas, Mobile CPR goes out into the community and leads CPR training as well as training community leaders to become trainers themselves in order to reach every community in Philadelphia with this necessary and vital education, and...
Whereas, in honoring their son, Simon Sudden, the Sudden family has worked tirelessly to bring awareness to sudden cardiac arrest as well as sudden infant death syndrome by founding Simon's Heart, and whereas Simon's Heart provides education within communities and donates AEDs to communities and organizations that are in desperate need of these lifesaving devices, now therefore be it.
Resolved that the Council of the City of Philadelphia does hereby recognize that today, October, or that October 25th, as Cardiac Health Awareness Day in the city of Philadelphia, and therefore be further resolved that a gross copy of this resolution be presented to the representatives of Simon's Heart as evidence of the sincere respect and admiration for this legislative body for promoting cardiac awareness. I want to end with that the partners that we have up here and several more, as you heard in the resolution, are in-kinding their services, nonprofits that are really trying to help promote cardiac awareness in both children and the general public and our elderly. Have been partnering with me, we created a program called ACT NOW, and that's training. We should by the end of this calendar year have between 800 to 1,000 people certified in CPR. That's all the community groups, and now it's a pilot, it's a personal privilege in my district, all right, but we're going into schools. We're training fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders in our public schools, in our youth, and that's where the Simon's Heart Foundation is extremely helpful in understanding that, you know, it's okay to be reactive, but we're going to have you be reactive under emergency situations after you call 911, all right, to be that trained good Samaritan and understand how you can help be a first responder until somebody gets on the scene. So I want to thank you all for collectively being a partner as we move forward and also independently doing the work of the good angels here in the city and region. So, thank you very much and congratulations to you all.
Thank you. And the Chair recognizes Mr. Sudden for remarks.
Thank you very much, Councilman Heenan, Councilmembers. It's a... This is a big city and there's a lot on the agenda, and so it's not lost on me that you're taking some time today to recognize an issue that's really important to me and my family, I'm sure to many people in this audience, as well as to my friends up here standing next to me. Just real briefly, this past Sunday, October 21st, was Simon's 14th birthday. Unfortunately, he wasn't here to celebrate it. Simon died when he was three months old. And after he passed, my wife and I were told to get our hearts checked by our pediatrician, and my wife discovered a heart condition. We learned that long QT, the condition that she has, has been attributed to up to 10% to 15% of all SIDS deaths. And then we started hearing stories about students who would be playing sports and they would collapse and die suddenly with no apparent reason. They were also suffering sudden cardiac arrest from about one of 10 conditions, and we couldn't tolerate this. We didn't want another family to have to bury their child to a detectable and treatable heart condition. And growing up, I thought sudden cardiac arrest was for people older than me. I didn't realize it wasn't just an adult thing, it was a kid thing too. So, we've started providing free heart screenings and advocating for CPR and trying to get AEDs out into our city and beyond, because if we can detect the conditions before they cause harm, that's amazing. But if we can't, then we have to be prepared for when the conditions strike. And I'm sure many of you out there learned CPR a long time ago like I did when there was the gross mouth-to-mouth element. That's not a reality anymore. Now it's just chest compressions, and these are things that are just like pumping up a ball full of air with a ball pump. It's easy, and hopefully all of us up here can demystify CPR and AED use so that more of us feel comfortable to deploy these things when someone's suffering from cardiac arrest, whether it's a student or an adult. So, I really, really appreciate being recognized. I'm honored to be a part of a community that's out there trying to raise awareness about sudden cardiac arrest and death and doing something about it. Thank you very much for giving me this time today. I really appreciate it.
Counsel, be at ease. Thank you and congratulations. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, who presented a resolution to the Philadelphia Boys Choir. With Jeffrey Smith, Stefan Stokel, and those accompanying them, please join the Councilwoman at the podium. And we also have Councilman Jones, Councilwoman Gimm, Councilman Tobinberger, Councilman O., Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I first want to publicly say thank you to your Sergeant-at-Arms team for working so closely and working in an extremely collegial fashion with my staff to allowing us to hear the 100 angelic voices that we'll hear later this morning. In the spirit of music and all of what it means, I believe Richard Daley, former mayor of Chicago, said it best when he said, and I stated, "Politicians don't bring people together, artists do." For those of us who love the arts, we know that there are only three colors, when you think about it, we actually start with three colors. There are 10 digits, five dance positions, and seven notes. It is what we do with them that's important. Today, we are honoring and recognizing the Philadelphia Boys Choir and Corral on the occasion of their 50th anniversary. The Philadelphia Boys Choir and Corral has captivated audiences around the world where their musicianship, intelligence, and interpretive abilities for the past 50 years, and has become one of the most successful boys choir in the United States located right here in
Whereas, the Philadelphia Boys Choir and Corral has performed for kings and queens and five U.S. presidents. Whereas, the Philadelphia Boys Choir and Corral recent tours have allowed its diverse group of Philadelphia boys and men to perform to high accolades in China, Ecuador, Singapore, and Vietnam, and...
Whereas, since its founding in 1968, the Philadelphia Boys Choir and Corral has proudly represented both the city of Philadelphia and the United States of America during many worldwide concert tours around the globe, which has earned them the nickname America's ambassadors of songs. Thank you, young men. And whereas, as a Grammy-nominated and Emmy-award-winning group, the Philadelphia Boys Choir's highly-acclaimed performances have earned them some of the most distinguished honors in music, and...
And I went with them to the China trip, and all I will tell you is we had an interesting time over. Whereas, the Philadelphia Boys Choir and Corral has been led by its artistic director, Jeffrey R. Smith, since 2004. Mr. Smith, who was in the choir as a child and is an accomplished conductor, composer, and musician in his own right, having performed with the Philadelphia Orchestra, New Jersey Symphony, and as a pianist for several theatrical performances both on and off Broadway. Mr. Smith also serves as an assistant conductor and pianist for the Philadelphia Pops, and...
Whereas, the Philadelphia Boys Choir has collaborated with world-renowned orchestras and soloists such as Luciana Pavarotti, the Philadelphia Orchestra, the Philly Pops, Pennsylvania Ballet, Opera Philadelphia, Curtis Institute, as well as the Mendelson Club, Pig Iron Theater, Vox Amadeus, and the Chamber Orchestra of Philadelphia. And whereas, the Philadelphia Boys Choir and Corral has been featured on television shows such as Good Morning America, Saturday Night Live, The Today Show, and...
Whereas, many choir alumni have become distinguished leaders in the arts and entertainment industry, including Boys to Men, group member Shawn Stockman, Broadway composer Ben Pacek, opera singers Justin Hopkins and Lawrence Sazo, Food Network personality and chef Dave Lieberman, actor James Pierce III, as well as KYW TV's news anchor Yuki Washington, and the Boys Choir's Associate Music Director John Stroud, and...
Whereas, the Philadelphia Boys Choir and Corral was the first American performing arts group to perform in Cuba after the Cuban Revolution, and it returned to that country in both 2003 and 2017. And whereas, the Philadelphia Boys Choir and Corral has also performed at Carnegie Hall, Lincoln Center, and the Sydney Opera House, and...
Whereas, the Philadelphia Boys Choir and Corral has performed for kings and queens and five U.S. presidents. And whereas, the Philadelphia Boys Choir and Corral, recent tours have allowed its diverse group of Philadelphia boys and men to perform to high accolades in China, Ecuador, Singapore,
Whereas, the Philadelphia Boys Choir and Corral is celebrating 50 years of outstanding achievements and musical excellence, and Philadelphia is proud to be the home to such a world-renowned groundbreaking group. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that we hereby honor and recognize the Philadelphia Boys Choir and Corral on the occasion of its 50th anniversary. Congratulations.
And the Chair recognizes Mr. Smith for remarks.
We thank you very much, Council President Clark and his office, as well as our own Councilman Squillen and Julian Thompson, Councilwoman Blackwell from our old district when we were back on Palton Avenue, and of course, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown and her staff for this honor today, as well as all of the Councilmen and women up here this morning. Besides this honor, we want to thank all of the Council people for their hard work for the city of Philadelphia, because we know you're here, because you love and care about the people of Philadelphia, as do our boys and men. And so when we go around the world and sing our songs and share our music, besides representing our country, we specifically represent our city. And the boys are proud of that, and they take that seriously. And many of the countries we visit, they don't necessarily speak English, but they understand our message through our music. And they realize that though our countries may have differences, and maybe they're not happy with the way things are going in our own country, they know that the people of America are great people. And they're able to have a higher opinion of Americans than before we visited, because they meet these fine young men, and they see that these are good kids and they care about others. And so they're happy to represent us abroad as well as here in Philadelphia. And as a matter of fact, some of the boys take it so seriously that as they get older, they go into major in foreign affairs or political fields. We've got several boys overseas, and maybe someday, some of them will be here in city council. But we, again, we thank you very much, and we're going to present, after photos here, we're going to present one song for you for our city. It's called "Philadelphia, USA." Thank you.
Counsel, be at ease.
Philadelphia, where your family's sound is strong, so be strong. When we see our big road, made in all our heart.
Philadelphia, shout is clear, bells are ringing, it's far and near.
Strike the band up, it's your day, Philadelphia, USA.
Sound the pipe and sound the drum, this old town is where dreams come.
You and I can proudly say, Philadelphia, USA.
A city of wonders, now you'll be under, a beautiful feeling, a brotherly love.
All of the beauty and love you fear, is a reason for her appear.
Here in Philadelphia, you're okay.
Philadelphia's where you'll stay.
Philadelphia, all the way, Philadelphia, 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 USA.
Philadelphia, keeping pace with trite and true, and few.
There is passion in our soul, and he knows in his heart.
Philadelphia, what's a town, hits you up when you're feeling down.
Shout out now the Philly way, Philadelphia, USA.
So all around you, the sights and the sounds, you'll visit museums or ticket a show.
Scroll down the front street, you'll go astray, from the moment you're here, you'll know.
Yes, you'll know.
Philadelphia's growing strong.
Philadelphia's doing where we belong.
You and I can proudly say, Philadelphia, Philadelphia, you're a wonder.
Philadelphia, Philadelphia, you're a wonder.
Hey, me that worth coming to work today. Okay, that's awesome. Our next order of business is... Communications and the Chair requested the Sergeant-at-Arms delivers the messages to the Chief Clerk. Mr. Decker, please read those messages.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am submitting herewith for the consideration of your honorable body an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property and the Director of Commerce, on behalf of the city, to acquire an approximately 15-acre property known as 1501 Seminole Street, Leicester, Pennsylvania, together with all improvements thereon, all under certain terms and conditions.
Senator, do you have any additional communications?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Those messages will be printed in today's journal. And our next order of business is introduction of bills and resolutions. And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
President, good morning. This morning, I offered six bills. The first bill, led by Councilmembers Maria Quinones Sanchez, Chair of the Education Committee, Janie Blackwell, you and myself. And one resolution, Mr. President.
An ordinance amending Chapter 193200 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Keystone Opportunity Zone, Economic Development District, and Strategic Development Area, by requiring that applications for zone designation include opportunity plans that provide for apprenticeship and other work opportunities for students enrolled in the school district career and technical education programs. And an ordinance amending Title VI of the Philadelphia Code entitled Health Code relating to lead paint hazards and other violations to provide for appeal periods and for penalties, to provide for inspection and fees, to revise definitions and to promote lead safety. And an ordinance amending Chapter 6200 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Preventative Medicine to establish requirements for the testing of blood lead levels in children. And an ordinance amending Title 16 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Public Property by adding a new section requiring that certain renovation projects involving city-owned or occupied buildings or the use of city capital dollars be certified as lead-free or lead-safe prior to the completion of the renovation project. And an ordinance amending Chapter 93900 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Property Licenses and Owner Accountability to modify application and notice requirements and penalties for noncompliance. And an ordinance amending Chapter 192600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Business Income and Receipts Taxes to modify application requirements for commercial activity licenses.
Those six bills just read by the Chief Clerk will be referred to the appropriate committees.
And a privilege resolution congratulating the City of Philadelphia and the Office of Sustainability on winning the 2018 Bloomberg American Cities Climate Challenge.
And that will be on today's calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I introduce two bills.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of 45th Street and Spur Street, Cedar Avenue and 47th Street, 34th Street and Brandywine Street, Farragut Street and Walnut Street.
Vered to committee.
And an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Larchwood Avenue and South 47th Street, Larchwood Avenue and South 59th Street, North 33rd Street and Spring Garden Street, Delante Street and South 51st Street, Sansom Street and South 51st Street, South 61st Street and Chestnut Street.
Vered to committee. The Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I offer three bills, one co-sponsored by Councilwoman Sanchez, the other two on your behalf, and then one resolution on your behalf.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance amending Chapter 9100 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Fair Practices Ordinance, Protections Against Unlawful Discrimination, by adding a new section prohibiting retail establishments from refusing to accept cash as a form of payment.
Vered to committee.
And an ordinance establishing a parking regulation on Taney Street, West Side, Brown Street to Aspen Street.
Vered to committee.
And an ordinance establishing a parking regulation on Marlboro Street, West Side, Wildy Street to Richmond Street.
Vered to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia redevelopment authority without consideration, deeds conveying conditional fee simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements thereon, situated in the 43rd Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Next week's calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, you offer two bills.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance amending Chapter 10700 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Refugees and Littering to designate certain blocks as litter enforcement corridors pursuant to Title 75 of the Pennsylvania Consolidated Statutes.
Vered to committee.
And an ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on the 8,000 block of Christmas Street, both sides.
Vered to committee. Chairman, recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one bill.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Flamingo Street, Lawn Street, Esdale Street, Shaw Street, and Hillside Avenue.
Vered to committee. The Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I have four bills and one privilege resolution. I'd like to speak briefly on one of my bills, please.
Thank you, Councilman.
You're welcome, Council President.
An ordinance amending Chapter 192900 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Senior Citizen Low-Income Special Tax Provisions by increasing the maximum income that will qualify claimants for the tax freeze authorized by this chapter.
Vered to committee.
And an ordinance amending Section 12905 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Permits for Curb-loading Zones to Exempt Businesses on Streets with Designated Bicycle Lanes from any fee for designation of a curb-loading zone.
Vered to committee.
And an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property and the Director of Commerce, on behalf of the city, to acquire an approximately 15-acre property known as 501 Seminole Street, Leicester, Pennsylvania.
Vered to committee.
And an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Fitzwater Street and South 23rd Street, Fitzwater Street and South 12th Street, Carpenter Street and South 18th Street, Christian Street and Grace Ferry Avenue, Christian Street and South 20th Street, Christian Street and Grace Ferry Avenue, Christian Street and South 20th Street, Christian Street and South 21st Street.
The Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I want to, one, thank you for your partnership in being a sponsor on the extension to the senior citizens' tax freeze bill, which will allow our seniors who have seen rising real estate taxes to freeze their taxes, and most importantly, expanding the amount from a single individual going from $23,500 to $27,500, and a married couple going from $31,500 to $35,500. And I want to thank the state and the General Assembly for giving us the ability to expand the criteria for this increase. Through different parts of my district, we have seen rising real estate taxes that significantly impact our seniors. And when I go to different community meetings, seniors always talk about how they can't take advantage of the senior citizens' tax freeze because they may be $100, $200 above the threshold in helping them freeze their taxes. And so this is a very significant piece of legislation, because we want to keep people inside of their homes, regardless if they live in Point Breeze or Packer Park. And so I'll continuously advocate to make sure that we have all the tools available to allow them to stay in their home when they aren't placed out, and we can continue to support development without displacement. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman.
And a privilege resolution declaring that every Friday before a game by the Philadelphia Eagles shall be known as Eagles Friday, and encouraging celebration of the occasion with expressions of pride in the defending Super Bowl champions, such as...
And that will be on this week's calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Quina Sanchez.
Thank you. I have one bill on behalf of the administration and a non-privileged resolution. I also like to speak about it.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance amending Title IV of the Philadelphia Code entitled The Philadelphia Building Construction and Occupancy Code, Subcode R, entitled The Philadelphia Residential Code, by adding amendments to the 2015 edition of the International Residential Code as adopted by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, Subcode EC.
Vered to committee.
A privilege resolution authorizing the Committee on Appropriations to conduct hearings to consider the impact of federal qualified opportunity zones on the fair and equitable development of Philadelphia, and to thereby recommend impactful, responsive changes to the city's policies, procedures, and budget.
And that will be on today's calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilman Green. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman, I'm sorry. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Quina Sanchez.
Thank you. I want to thank Councilwoman Blondell Reynolds Brown, Al Talbemberger, and Alan Dom for co-sponsoring this. There is an article in today's paper that speaks to opportunity zones, and it attributes some of the findings by a recent Drexel study. The opportunity zone was part of the billion-dollar tax cuts that Trump passed in 2017. And over the last year, between the state and the city, designated areas throughout the city... the last year between the state and the city designated areas throughout the city were selected around opportunity zone. As many of you know, I legislate, my legislative practice is it's not about the know, it's about the how, and how we shape development. To echo the sentiments of Councilman Johnson, we have to do equitable and responsible development in the city, and I think that it is timely that the City of Philadelphia get its hands around what potentially could just be tax shelters for the rich and lead to further speculation, or an opportunity to create responsible development that ensures long-term residents the ability to stay in their neighborhoods. I look forward to working with all my council colleagues as we discuss this, as we shape this, to make sure that Philadelphia grows in an equitable way. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair now recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I have one bill I'm introducing today. As we continue the work of the Special Committee on Regularity Review and Reform, this bill helps to make our city more friendly to small businesses. This bill was cosponsored by my colleagues on the Special Committee, including councilmembers Sanchez, Johnson, Heenan, and Tollenberger.
Thank you, Councilman.
And an ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning to revise certain provisions of Chapter 14900 entitled Signs by amending the commercial mixed-use sign allowance.
Verdict committee. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker. I got you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Good morning, Council President. No bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Good morning, Council President. I have one extremely privileged resolution sponsored by all members of council with, I'm sure, monsterly affection.
Thank you, Councilwoman, for that extremely privileged resolution.
A privilege resolution welcoming Gritty, the new mascot of the Philadelphia Flyers, and honoring the spirit and passion that Gritty has brought to the City of Philadelphia and the entire country, both on and off the ice.
And that will be on today's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Tottenberger.
Good morning, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
An ordinance establishing a parking regulation on Germantown Avenue, West Villalona Street to Gorgas Lane, both sides.
Verdict committee.
And an ordinance establishing parking restrictions on East Washington Lane, both sides, between Crittenon Street and Stettner Avenue.
Verdict committee. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I offer one privilege resolution and one non-privileged resolution. If I could be here heard briefly after the title of the non-privileged resolution is read.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privilege resolution recognizing, congratulating, and thanking the United States Marine Corps on the occasion of its 243rd anniversary.
Today's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution requesting that the city controller conduct an information systems performance audit of the city's technological infrastructure.
And chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. Just to avoid confusion, I've introduced that because there were some technical changes that were necessary. I'll be withdrawing the resolution that I introduced last week and replacing it with this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. That will be, is that non-privileged? No, that will be on next week's calendar. Thank you, Councilman. And that concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions, and our next order of business is reports from committee, and the chair recognizes Councilwoman Quina Sanchez for a report from the Committee of License and Inspection.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Licenses and Inspections reports one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Licenses and Inspections to which is referred Bill Number 180648, entitled an ordinance amending Title IX, Chapter 600 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Service and Other Businesses to Establish a License and Related Requirements for Tire Dealers. Respectfully reports, it is considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 180648.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 180648. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. That bill will be placed in our first reading calendar today. That concludes our reports from committee, and the next order of business is consideration of the calendar. I note that the bill just reported from committee with the suspension of the rules has been deemed to have had a first reading. This bill will be placed on our second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. As there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar, the chair recognizes Councilman Heenan for the purpose of calling up resolutions and bills on the second reading and final passes calendar today.
Thank you, Mr. President. There are no additional bills on the first reading calendar. I'm going to thank you. The following resolution bills are being called up for second reading and final passage calendars today. Bill Number 180916, 180917, 180920, 180922, 180926, 180815, 180691, and 180699. All other bills and resolutions are being held at this time.
Thank you, Councilmen. For considering these bills and resolutions, we will have our public comment session. It will go as follows. If you are interested in testifying on a bill or resolution that's on our final passes calendar today... We good? We good? All right, I'll start over again. We will now have our public comment session. The public comment sessions regulations go as follow. If you are interested in testifying on a bill or resolution on the final passes calendar today, if you have not already done so, you may sign up at the table to my left. When your name is called, you will go into the middle of the council chambers. There's a podium there. There's a device on that podium. When the light turns green, it will be your time to speak. When the light turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds to conclude your remarks. When the light turns red, we'd ask that you please adhere to our guidelines to conclude your remarks. I would like to thank you very much for your anticipated cooperation. Before I call Mr. Decker, I would just like to make note that the chair will be granting Councilwoman Sherrell Parker leave of absence for the remainder of the session. She is recorded as voting aye on all bills and resolutions. Mr. Decker, please call the first name on the list.
Emmanuel Bussi.
Thank you. Hello, testing.
Is it on? Got it? There you go.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Give me three minutes. Three minutes. All right, Scotty. I've got a minute. All right. Good, is it afternoon yet? Good morning, everyone. So, I'm here today...
Mr. Bussi, just state your name for the record.
My name's Emmanuel Bussi. I'm speaking on behalf of David O'Sbill. That's related to the Parking Authority, I believe, is 160026. I'm not sure, though. For over a year and a half...
Thanks. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenly.
Leave the comments supposed to be on bills on second reading, final passage. This bill is not?
Yes. Is that bill on the second reading?
No.
Okay. Can I change it? I'll speak on bill...
Pick another one.
Pick another one. All right. I'll speak on Bill Number 170247, Blondell Reynolds Brown Bill, about the Federal Trade Commission.
All right. If you can start out talking about that, it will be helpful.
All righty. So, the federal, the bill related to the Federal Trade Commission, that bill or resolution, I'm going to use an example. Let's say that bill was up for consideration, and 10 of you, which I spoke to 10 of you, 10 of you, nine of you on the phone, on a web conference, on record, in support of that bill, nine of you. One of you, Janie Blackwell, I spoke to in person last year, 10 of you are in support of discussing that bill. One of you is not in favor of discussing that bill. It is not fair to the democratic process, small d, or the citizens of Philadelphia to have that bill held up by one council member. It is not fair to process to have that bill or any other bill held up by one council member. In the effort to have transparency, if Philadelphia knew that council's leadership and council's process could hold up a bill, one person could hold up a bill when 10 of them want that bill discussed, none of your constituency would agree to that. Every one of your constituency wants you guys to battle the Parking Authority and battle to take back on-street parking. Every single, it's not a constituent. We went into Bill Greenley's ward and asked 208 people in his ward, and in your district, Councilman Clark, you remember, we asked 208 of your constituency, do you want Bill Greenley to bring the bill up for a hearing?
It was about the...
208 of them said yes. So, you have 51 community activists and leaders saying bring the bill up for discussion, 208 residents saying bring the bill up for discussion, 10 council people saying they want to bring this bill up for discussion, and one person saying, no, I don't want to discuss it, and it's not voted. It's a process, it's a problem when the, when the system is broken in which one person could hold up and handcuff democracy. And I called on my council members with the courage to sign a letter simply asking Bill Greenley to hold a hearing to discuss that bill. Have the courage to do so. I yield.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, too.
Joe Denahell commenting on 180916, 180920, 180917.
Good morning. This is official decree of the people. Mer man damis quo warranto, as such requires immediate action remedy. Every week, council mayor, governor, and others transfer private property to government, probably illegally. Last week, bullying was denounced by most of council. Then council continued to unanimously strip constituents of their private property. Is governor, senator, mayor, council, and others all talk and no action? Does unanimous approval to use HUD, low-income housing money, to build a mall or my stolen home make all of you the legalized version of the criminals? Justice Brandeis predicted crime is contagious if the government becomes the lawbreaker. It breeds contempt for the law, invites every man to be a law unto himself, invites anarchy. The governor, senator, mayor, council, and others oppose or deny God-given rights and my trial and jury several times. Is oath violating prosecuted anymore? If committing one crime one time would send people to jail, why are my numerous complaints unprosecuted by the Attorney General? This Rico-style conspiracy to deny rights must be prosecuted to respect the rule of law, Constitution, and sacrifices by patriots. The Constitutions require me a remedy of this breach of law, breach of laws, breach of fiduciary duty. Your oath of office requires you to act or face prison. 42 U.S.C. 1982, 1983, 1985, 1986, 1987, 18 U.S.C. 241, 242, 2381, 2384, PA Constitution, Article 1, Sections 1 through 28, 26 P.A. CSA, 703, 705, 708, 709, 711, 712, 713, 716, 902, and other laws listed in SCOTUS 158965, 141330, 144056 appear violated. I call for the federal and Commonwealth governments to perform their constitutional obligations to investigate and prosecute all involved in the theft and illegal deed transfer of my property, 1038 West Wyoming Avenue, the denial of God-given, 42 U.S.C. 1982 property rights for 24 years is egregious, extraordinary, oath violating, and requires immediate remedy. A just government must obey the rule of law. This color law government must have its charter to govern revoked until a constitutionally compliant government is installed. Public servants cannot refuse their sworn duty to act, any more than a fireman can refuse to fight fire. The sovereign people require oath constitution law being enforced, and jail is required for all who violate oath constitution law. I remind council, it takes a lot of law preparation to create and allow my...
Thank you very much for your testimony.
There are no other speakers on the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. We will now continue with our calendar, and, Mr. Decker, if you can read the title of 180916.
A resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia of redevelopment authority without consideration, deeds conveying conditional fees simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements thereon situated in the 46th Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution 180916 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 180917.
A resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia of redevelopment authority without consideration, deeds conveying conditional fees simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements thereon situated in the 37th Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenly.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. 180917 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 180920.
A resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia of redevelopment authority without consideration, deeds conveying conditional fees simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements thereon situated in the 4th Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. 180920 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 180922.
A resolution urging the U.S. Department of Homeland Security to withdraw its proposed rule changing the definition of public charge, which would harm millions by undermining access to essential health, nutrition, and shelter for immigrants and their families in the City of Philadelphia and across the United States, and expressing opposition to the proposed rule as inhumane and contrary to public health.
And the chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you very much, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, 180926.
A resolution requesting that the city controller conduct a forensic information systems audit of the city's technological infrastructure.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Resolution Number 180926 be withdrawn.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution 180926 is withdrawn. Mr. Decker, 180815.
An ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of 20th Street and Brown Street, Bouvier Street and Montgomery Avenue, 28th Street and Cecil B. Moore Avenue, 23rd Street and Parrish Street, Mount Vernon Street and 11th Street, Harper Street and 29th Street, Brown Street and 23rd Street.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenly.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer an amendment to Bill Number 180815 on your behalf. Amendment has been circulated to the members of council, and I move the adoption of the amendment.
All those in favor of said amendment? Those opposed, ayes have it. Amendment to 180815 has been approved. 180815, as amended, will be on our second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, 180691.
An ordinance authorizing shift capital to install, own, and maintain proposed access vault encroachments at 3701 through 07 North Broad Street.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call to roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Dom. Councilman Green. Councilman Greenly. Councilwoman Gimm. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson. Councilman... Greenlee, Councilwoman Gimm, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O., Councilwoman Parker is voting aye, Councilwoman Gunez Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubenberger, Council President Clark.
Aye, ayes are sixteen and ayes are zero. Majority of members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 1-80699.
An ordinance entitled, "Tender the Philadelphia Code," entitled Regulation of Individual Conduct and Activity by Amending Section 10615, entitled Disorderly Conduct and Related Offenses, and Chapter 102100, entitled Marijuana Possession, to provide for certain additional offenses to be enforceable by civil penalties.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call to roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman Gimm, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O., Councilwoman Parker is voting aye, Councilwoman Gunez Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Taubenberger, Council President Clark.
Aye, ayes are fifteen and ayes are one. Majority of members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, you have any additional resolutions?
Our resolution cred congratulating the city of Philadelphia and the Office of Sustainability on winning the 2018 Bloomberg American Cities Climate Challenge, introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. That resolution co-sponsored by Councilman Green, I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. That resolution is adopted.
And a resolution declaring that every Friday before a game by the Philadelphia Eagles shall be known as Eagles Friday, and encouraging celebration of the occasion with expressions of pride in the defending Super Bowl champions, such as wearing green on Eagles-themed clothing, introduced by Councilman Johnson.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
I still believe, I move for the adoption of the resolution, Council President.
Can I get a second? It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Appropriations to conduct hearings to consider the impact of federal qualified opportunity zones on the fair and equitable development of Philadelphia, and to thereby recommend impactful, responsive changes to the city's policies, procedures, and budget, introduced by Councilwoman Gunez Sanchez.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gunez Sanchez.
I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. That resolution is adopted.
And a resolution welcoming Gritty, the new mascot of the Philadelphia Flyers, and honoring the spirit and passion that Gritty has brought to the city of Philadelphia and the entire country, both on and off the ice, introduced by Councilwoman Gimm.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you so much, Council President, and thank you to my colleague here, Councilman Taubenberger, who is a fifty-year season ticket holder for the Philadelphia Flyers. And with that, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
And I would be honored, as a fifty-year-old, not fifty-year-old, I'm older than that, fifty-year flyer season ticket holders, to second that.
All right. Moving in property. Second, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. That res... Uh-uh. Counselman, what, clarify. All right. He ugly. We'll ask for an asterisk to be put beside that, so you can clarify in case anyone ever asks.
I have nightmares.
All right. All right, enough said. That resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing, congratulating, and thanking the United States Marine Corps on the occasion of its 243rd anniversary, introduced by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much. I move for adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. That resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. And speeches on behalf of the minority, chair recognizes Councilman Taubenberger.
Council President, thank you. Immediately after session today, we'll be holding a briefing from the General Services Administration, and it is really a great opportunity to get the information on valuable services the city can get, really free of charge for, for many community groups and schools. In the past few years, the GSA through, has given computers for learning programs and has donated almost 600,000 worth of computers to Philadelphia schools. This is one of the many services that GSA offers, and our city can take advantage of it. Please join me and my office in the caucus room right after this for a briefing. Joyce Haas, who's the original, regional administrator for the General Services Administration, will be present, as well as our senior staff. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. And speeches on behalf of the majority, chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning. October the 21st through the 27th is lead poisoning prevention week in the city of Philadelphia. Lead poisoning remains a public health, economic, and environmental justice issue. Today, after over eighteen months of homework, my staff and I have put forth five bills aimed at preventing childhood lead poisoning in our city, a city that has three times as many children with elevated blood levels than that of Flint, Michigan. A city that has three times as many children with elevated blood lead levels as that of Flint, Michigan. Lead poisoning continues to be a chronic public health issue despite my initial legislation passed in 2011. Though rates of elevated blood lead levels have fallen off the last decade, our, we still stack higher than the national average. So I need to thank members of our body who helped make that bill happen in 2011, including Councilwoman Marion Tasko, who worked closely, and to those in council who helped us push this issue again in 2017. The passage of the 2011 law happened because we worked closely for two years with homeowners, HAPCO, lead specialists, experts, and advocates to tackle the lead issue. However, data gathered since that passage of that law reveals that children are still being poisoned and the problem persists. This package of bills aims to close loopholes in the current law, provide and require an increase in the education and awareness for parents and caregivers on the current law, engaging more than just those who are members of HAPCO. Science tells us that lead exposure seriously harms a child's health, increasing risk for damage to the brain and nervous system, learning and behavioral problems that lead to juvenile delinquency and criminal behavior, hearing and speech problems, all of which are irreversible. Long-term lead poisoning damages the nervous system and the cardiovascular system, and science tells us that it also impacts reproductive health. Today, 115,000 rental units in Philadelphia contain lead-based paint. Seventy-eight thousand units have a significant enough lead-based paint hazard that they would fail a lead-safe certification test. And sadly, in too many of our zip codes, over 20% of children tested report elevated blood lead levels. So in closing, this package of bills will require that the city lead by example and that we practice what we preach. The city, too, will be obligated to do its part when it comes to any major renovations, particularly in the area of rebuild. This package of bills will look to ask for all rental units to be certified as lead-safe or lead-free, and so ultimately, these bills exhibit shared responsibility to eliminate lead poisoning amongst the children in our city. Finally, if we believe and agree philosophically that it is easy for us to build strong children than to repair broken men and women, then we agree that we need to do more when it comes to prevent childhood lead poisoning. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Several years ago, WHYY, Philadelphia Corporation for the Aging, held a conference dealing with senior citizens and the continuum of aging. One of the things that came out of that was the concept of aging in place. What it simply means is, we get older, we want to stay in our familiar surroundings, adapt our housing to meet our physical challenges. Steps become mountains, unstable pavements become obstacles we have to negotiate. Another of the things that we are now, today, experiencing, and I want to thank my colleague, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, and my colleague, Councilwoman Janie Blackwell, on the housing end of this, is the fact that a lot of our older multi-unit facilities that were predicated on HUD grants, tax credits for affordable housing, many of them that were predicated for senior citizens under Section 811, many of them for elderly under Section 202, are coming of age, where they are aging out of those original agreements. Some, like in your district, have adapted and recommitted to the concept of affordable housing, or housing for the disabled or the elderly. But some of them have found themselves in marketable areas, and we're not sure what the future holds for those developments as they come of age. So I've asked the redevelopment authority and others to take a look at that. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown is submitting a resolution, or may have submitted it, about the treatment of our elderly in assisted living facilities, and I want to commend her for that. We had the pavilion, I mentioned, had 300-plus people in it. Due to deferred maintenance, let's kick the can down the road, the electrical infrastructure had aged. People were using backup generators as main sources of electricity. And when those generators fell through, we found ourselves in a situation where seniors who needed assistance to walk couldn't come down on elevators, found themselves in the dark on stairwells, trying to find their way to the bottom. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, whose staff helped us, who you told me not to mention this, they were just doing their jobs, I'm putting you out there anyway, they did a yo-person's job of helping those seniors, to the point where contractors bought lunches for the people and took them up to their respective rooms, and they ran generator cables so that people on oxygen were able to make sure that they could breathe. So we want to take a look at what multi-unit buildings are coming of age and get ahead of the curve to figure out what their next life in public use is going to be. The fourth district has the largest number of seniors in Philadelphia, except for maybe Councilman O'Neil in the tenth. And we'll argue about that at another time. But we are looking at legislation to protect them, whether you talk about good cause, which we're going to have to have a final vote on, which was adopted because of the Penn Wind situation, the Penn Wind situation, where people who had lived there for as many as 32 years, never missed a beat, paid on time, were summarily dismissed from their housing. We're in a tumultuous time. We've been discovered in Philadelphia. People understand we're located geographically between the capital of the nation, Washington, D.C., and the financial capital of the nation, New York, and that our real estate is undervalued. As transit becomes easier to get to New York and D.C., people figure, "I'll make my money in New York and spend it on housing in Philly," which is causing displacement. So we need to get in front of this. I want us to be ahead of the curve. I don't want what happened at the pavilion or at Penn Wind to happen in your respective districts. So we're trying to, as my colleague asked me to do, work with the tenants' union, work with the apartment owners' association. Councilman Dom was instrumental in, in negotiating some of the concessions that were made on both sides, but reasonable legislation to protect people who live here is on the docket and will have to stand and deliver about it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. Wanted to echo the work that Councilwoman Reynolds Brown did in the resolution commending the city of Philadelphia, the Office of Sustainability, as well as Philadelphia Gas Works, in reference to the fact that the city of Philadelphia was selected in the second round of funding from Bloomberg, Bloomberg philanthropic entity to receive resources to address climate change. This demonstrates the work that this administration, this legislative body, as well as PGW, has taken to really address how we come up with additional sustainable energy solutions for our city. In that vein, we are circulating a letter, and hopefully all my colleagues here on council will sign this letter, that we're sending to Acting EPA Administrator Wheeler, as well as the Acting Administrator King, regarding environmental standards that impact our city and also our Commonwealth. There's been some attempts to change some of the clear car standards that have been in place. These standards have done a lot in reference to helping the environment and, and making our cities and our nation's environment cleaner and reducing climate pollution. The Commonwealth Pennsylvania has done a lot of work in that regard, and we're, I'm asking my colleagues to stop the attempt to halt the clean car standards, which will impact our air pollution and allow the state's residents and our city residents to not deal with some of the extreme weather that we're currently experiencing and some of the environmental impacts that we're getting. So I'm hopeful that my colleagues will sign this letter that we're sending out, will be asking you to sign today. Also, as I, as I was listening to Councilmember Taubenberger talk about his 50 years as a season ticket holder for the Flyers, it made me think of another 50-year milestone. Actually, on this day, October 25th, 1968, two co-heads who met on the campus of Temple University as evening students were married on October 25th. One from Pitt County, North Carolina, who started at Morgan State, was in the Korean War, then eventually graduated from Temple University. Another who was born here in the city of Philadelphia, who has relatives from Barbados, was part of the Nubians Girls High Class 193, were married on this day, October 25th. I know they are listening because they listened to Mornings with Mary for a lot of years, and they're listening today. So to my parents, Walter and Nita Green, congratulations on your 50th wedding anniversary today. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. This evening at Yasha Grand Ballroom, located at 23rd and Snyder Avenue, we will be hosting our first-time homebuyer and lending fair. This is in partnership with the Urban Affairs Coalition. It is a result of a hearing that we hosted some time ago around the issue of redlining and making sure that banks are providing loans equally throughout the city of Philadelphia. And so we encourage everyone who's looking for a home, who's looking for financing to purchase a home or rehab a home, to come out to Yasha Fellowship Hall at 23rd and Snyder Avenue this evening from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. That concludes our speeches on behalf of the minority and the majority, and with that, chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown for motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, November 1, 2018, at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you. It's been moved. Second, that council stand adjourned until Thursday, November 1, 2018, 10:00 a.m. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, thank you very much. Thank you very much.[1703.11]